I got an ear infection.
Here.
Your drops.
Yeah. What else to teach, you know?
I was like.
Yeah. Allegra. I just put me laptop.
Oh, no way.
Yeah. Well, it was nice having you for like a year.
They love.
It's good.
Chair and Plank Commission, I just want to mention that I'm remote today, so I don't know if someone might have explained.
Yeah. We got it. Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
I hear your voice, Gabe. I can't see you.
You can't see me?
We can see you now. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. It is six oh two P M. And I call the meeting to order and. Let's see, Commissioner Figueroa, can you please see this in the?
Bless your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice as strong.
Thank you. Okay, can we please get roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Lial.
Present.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here, present.
Chair, Chair Virgen.
Present.
Vice Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Navarrete.
Present.
And they don't, since I'm not there, I don't know if Alternate Commissioner Gutierrez is there?
He is not here.
Okay. So have him as absent.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have any requests from commissioners? Or staff?
None from staff.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll go ahead and. I'll go ahead and motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All the second motion.
Okay, thank you. And can we get, can we get roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Lial.
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Aye.
And Madam Chair Virgen.
Aye, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. This is for planning commission meeting minutes, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have any corrections for the minutes? No? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Can we get a second?
Oh, sorry, Gabe.
Thank you. And can we please get roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Lial.
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Aye.
And Madam Chair Virgen.
Hi, thank you. We're gonna move on to written communications. Do we have anything?
None from staff. Sure.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please submit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments from where I'm at, but I don't know if. You need a gentleman, my tea, have a.
Okay.
Or Nikki.
There are none online.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to reports and requests. This is an opportunity for commissioners to request information on anything related to the city or planning commission. So do we have any requests from planning commissioners? Okay, see none. Do we have any reports?
No reports from staff.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't have any non-hearing items, so we're gonna move into our public hearing calendar, and it is item number two. This is our zoning ordinance amendment number twenty-two dash zero-three, and this is cannabis business streamline code amendments to amend Coachella Municipal Code Title Five and Seventeen, and this is regarding cannabis business zoning and operation in the city. Whenever you're ready, staff.
Okay, and I believe Nikki's gonna help run through the slides. I'm sorry, kind of request the changes. Okay, Plank Commissioners, this item was continued from the last Plank Commission meeting. There were a couple items that we wanted to verify with the city attorney before the Plank Commission making their decision, and so this is a zoning ordinance that would address streamlining code amendments for cannabis business operations in the city, and the amendments would be to Title Five and Title Seventeen, Title Seven being our zoning, and then Title Five are business regulations in the city. Next slide, please. So what I did from the last meeting, you didn't have this first time this was considered, and then when it was continued, the last Plank Commission meeting, but I thought it would be helpful considering the scope of the cannabis changes, there are some pretty big changes that we are requesting, and so I made this table for the commission. It's attachments. It gets attachment eight to your report, so there's two pages. So the first one talks about existing city Coachella cannabis business regulations, and it just kind of compares the different business types that we allow in the city, and then all the columns across the top are the basic requirements that that are in the municipal code, so you know, distance from some sort of uses, permitted locations like zoning, if there are size limits, if there are certain restrictions, if a certain permit is required. So this is what I tried to achieve, so hopefully this was helpful. And then the second page is what's proposed. So this is what's existing, and then this is proposed. And so you'll see some differences between the two tables, and I could use this as reference as, you know, the Plank Commission wants to deliberate. There should be copies of these in front of you. Did you all get copies?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Great, so that will be helpful to follow along, but this is essentially it, the changes that we're requesting and to kind of compare them, just to really see what we're doing. I know if we provided as a zoning code red line or in the resolution, it's really difficult to do a comparison, so I hope you find this helpful. So I'll just go over that real quick. So on the left-hand side, there's the different types of businesses. You have retail cannabis storefront business, businesses, but the other type of retail cannabis business is a storefront microbusiness, and so those are permitted. The microbusiness allows you to do, in addition to storefront retail, you can also do other things like cultivation in existing operation. So the one below that is retail cannabis, but that's non-storefront, so the city passed regulations creating a path for cannabis businesses that would do primarily delivery, but it would also allow for non-storefront microbusinesses that could do things like cultivation, and that's largely permitted, pretty much citywide. There are some restrictions, and so we can discuss that a little bit more. The other one is commercial cannabis activity, so that's another category, right? So you have retail cannabis activity storefront or non-storefront, and then you have commercial cannabis activity, which either can include cultivation, manufacturer, laboratory testing, distribution, including non-retail microbusinesses, and then you have commercial cannabis activity specifically for outdoor cannabis cultivation. And let's see, so we'll come back to this. I just wanted to highlight that, and next slide, please. Any questions before I go on? We'll come back to it. I just want to see if there's any big questions, burning questions before we go on.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, Gabe, once we adapt the ordinance, can we still go back down the road depending on how this whole thing is working out and adopting the ordinance, or we could amend the ordinance or change it up a little bit?
Yeah, you can, and if you look at what the Plank Commission is allowed to do, they can study and bring, suggest those zoning changes that we could bring back. So just kind of realize you have that ability in the municipal code, so this is not your only time to be able to make changes. So, but we thought it was enough years since a lot of these ordinances were adopted to kind of look at a bigger change in the city. The other reason is because if you're aware, that City of Indio is allowing retail cannabis businesses, and so, so you know, that's, you know, to a lot of people I speak to, that's a big market, and you know, that could potentially take a share away from those visitors coming to some of the dispensaries in Coachella. So I think these ordinance amendments help us stay competitive, and I'll go through that a little bit. This map in front of you is, gives you an idea where cannabis businesses are, can be located. So in the red boundary, there's three subzones, and those three subzones are where dispensaries could be located. So we created like small subzones, and in the downtown, you know, reading the reports from back then, the idea was to kind of encourage and serve as a catalyst for other business. The subzone three, there wasn't much discussion, but obviously it's close to the freeway, and then subzone two, which allows for two dispensaries. There's the existing one, the lighthouse, to see the Avenue forty-eight develop more. So the other place where retail is also allowed is in the the, the heavy, I'm sorry, the auto wrecking zone, which is off of Avenue forty-eight in that industrial area, so it doesn't require a certain zone change. All it requires is a conditional use permit from the Plank Commission, but again, our municipal code says that there's a maximum of ten dispensaries allowed in the city, so we could never exceed ten unless the city council decides to amend that or to make recommendations to the council. You have the ability to do that, make a recommendation. So the other is the downtown expansion zone in pink, and that's on the other side of the railroad across from Subzone One, and that allows for, so retail could be allowed there with a conditional use permit, but also requires rezoning to the industrial park overlay. So it's never just gonna stop at the Plank Commission. There's gonna be an additional review by the city council for that area. We don't have any dispensaries in that area. The other area is the South Employment District, and that's the area where we have a lot of the packing houses and the city's permit center, and there is one dispensary there. It is allowed there if you apply for a change of zone and have it approved by the Plank Commission and city council. The other one I wanted to highlight is the outdoor cultivation boundary in green. So last year, the Plank Commission and city council considered allowing for outdoor cannabis cultivation, and we've approved a couple conditional use permits, and you've seen a couple other ones that were withdrawn recently, but there are some regulations that allow for outdoor cultivation in that area. So, next slide, please. This is just a little closer look at Subzone One of Oviedo. So we allow for kind of a narrow area where retail cannabis could be permitted, right? So that's a dispensary. We, there are provisions in the code that do not allow for non-storefront retail to exist in the downtown. I don't know the reasons, but I could presume the reason would be that we want to see active storefronts and not storefronts that are closed off from the community, and I think that's why there's a special provision there. There are some conditional use permits that were granted in that area, which will show you, that were shown in the last slide, and there's an exhibit that shows all of those cannabis businesses in the city, and that is, for your reference, is attachment number, number six. So if you wanted to get an idea of what's permitted, that attachment also includes, you know, the status of those, those conditional use permits. Next slide, please. Subzone two is the, we call it like the Glenroy Resort area, so there are two dispensaries that are allowed here. This also allows for non-storefront retail or non-storefront retail microbusinesses, but we don't have any of those in this area. The lighthouse does operate in that area, but there is, in the code, a provision allows for one more in this area that has not happened. Next slide, please. And then Subzone Three, so a closer look at that area. It's on both sides of the I-ten freeway off of Dillon Road, and so there is one conditional use permit for the cannabis club that was approved, and they are going through tenant improvements on that building on the east side of Dillon Road, and we hope that would open and attract some visitors from the freeway. And next slide, please. The M W Wrecking Yard Zone. So if you're in this zone, there is no requirement for you to apply for a change of zone for cannabis, I'm sorry, retail cannabis overlay in this area. So the Wrecking Yard Zone is very special in a way where you don't have to go all the way to city council. It just requires a C U P from the Plank Commission, so it's kind of a special zone. It's not like the other subzones that I showed you in the previous pictures. Those require change of zone and the conditioning use permit. Next slide. In this area is the IP industrial park area, and so there are businesses that can do cultivation, testing, and other cannabis uses. Also, this area does allow for retail cannabis sales as a dispensary, and there is one that is currently operating near the corner of Avenue fifty-four Enterprise Way, but we don't have too many other cannabis businesses that have operated. There's really no room for other retail cannabis businesses in this, this area that would be a storefront cannabis dispensary, but it does allow for other uses like cultivation. So you might recall the other industrial building that's multi-tenant to the back. That, that, the owner, they actually, because they have a C U P, they can allow for microbusinesses to move into their tenant space under their conditioning use permit, but the applicant always needs to to comply with the, the conditioning use permit conditions. Next slide, please. Okay, um, this, this just shows the Coachella Cannabis Club in pink. Obviously, that's, that's now approved. Next slide. And then the other locations in the downtown, so you have Public Cannabis Kismet, which is an expired conditioning use permit. You have Libra, which is that historic building on Avenue, Grapefruit Boulevard and Sixth Street, but, and they're, they're going through their process. They communicated with us that they would open up by February, and so because they have an active permit and then have been diligent doing building inspections, it does allow for them to retain the conditioning use permit. And then the other one is Coachella Smoke, which has been operating for a couple of years, and then the last one is Greenhouse, which is on the corner of Ninth Street and Grapefruit. There's been no construction there. We considered that's C U P expired. They did receive one extension a while back, but they've never requested the second one. And then you'll see Best Friends Farms, and what that is at the top of the screen is non-storefront retail, so there is no storefront retail where someone could walk in through the door, has to be delivery. Next slide, please. And then I kind of highlighted this for you about the Coachella Relief, and then some of the other businesses that were approved for like cultivation and testing, those haven't materialized yet, but were approved. Next slide. Okay, and this kind of gives you an idea of what's going on in the auto wrecking zone. So you have projects like Desert Rock, which is doing cultivation in greenhouses. You have Desert Rock Two on there, and Desert Rock Four, Desert Rock Four, they're going through the building permit process, and Desert Rock Two, they're actually constructing their project. Coachella Warehouses, they're also developing, so we have that project out there that is called Del Gro, and some of you might have seen that on the city sponsored tour to see the cultivation activities that they have going on there, and then Coachella Greenery, which is that in parcel that you see there, is another retail dispensary that just recently opened up right before April. And so the one in orange is High Hampton Cannabis, which is an expired one, and then you have another business park that was approved by Plank Commission and city council called Coachella Day Park. And I'm sorry, Coachella Day Palm Business Park, and they haven't constructed anything yet. Next slide. So this is that map I was telling you about that's in your attachment. So I know the Plank Commission just wanted to get an idea of where these dispensaries are located, what the different statuses are, and I added additional information like when it was approved and the address, and so hopefully this is helpful, and so a lot of, a lot of them are open with, in green, but there are quite a few that still need to open, and so those are kind of like those other colors, either in plant check, under construction, or they're open. Next slide, please. Okay. Okay, so one of the amendments would do the following. It would remove the requirement of a commercial cannabis or retail cannabis applicant to pursue a change of zone to apply for either a retail cannabis R C overlay or the industrial park I P overlay. So I'll give you an example. So the lighthouse, in order for them to open, they had to get a conditional use permit, but they also needed a change of zone that was approved by the Plank Commission and the city council. So that's the R C overlay, so that zone exists there, and then for the industrial park I P overlay, the Coachella Relief, which is almost right across from the permit center, they had to apply for a conditional use permit and for a change of zone, and then those were approved by the Plank Commission and the city council. So it depends where you're at in terms of what your process would be. And so what we're proposing is to make it easier. So instead of requiring an added step where a change of zone is required, this, we would just say that a conditional use permit is required, and that would be a hearing before the Plank Commission, and the Plank Commission can still consider all the important issues that the Plank Commission would consider, like, you know, like safety and, and distance requirements. But I think the thing here, too, is we realize that, for example, like the, the Sixth Street Building, the older building, which is multi-tenant, that was Cheryl Thomas's application, or actually Kismet's application, that they applied for a retail cannabis overlay, and so even though the conditional use permit expires, the overlay does not expire, so it's still there. So it's kind of a cleanup item that I think is best to do this, this year, because, you know, does it make sense that there's still a retail cannabis overlay there when there's no longer a conditioning use permit? So that's one of our amendments that we are requesting from the Plank Commission. Next item, next slide. So the other thing it would do is eliminate the subzones for retail cannabis. So I showed you with the red boundaries, those areas where retail cannabis businesses could open. It's not just those areas, but those are subzones that primarily were for the purposes of opening a dispensary with a storefront, and so what, what this would do is eliminate the subzones and instead allow for a dispensary, you know, within those ten that the Plank Commission and city council currently allow them in a municipal code, to allow it in the neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and the tourist commercial zone, and allow it with the conditioning use permit. No longer require the change of zone, but the Plank Commission would still review the application, you know, for compatibility with the neighborhood and all the findings that the Plank Commission would need to make. Next slide, please. So you've seen this map before, but this is all the commercial zones in the city, and, and so what it would do is, instead of those areas, like the industrial kind of parks and those red boundary subzones, it would kind of expand retail cannabis businesses to anywhere that's commercial, but also realize again, there's a cap on dispensaries right now, and we're not requesting to change that cap of ten, so it would be a cap of ten, and they just, there's a few more options to locate. Now, there's only two C U Ps that haven't been exercised, so it's not really that many people that can exercise that ability to move in a, in one of these locations that's commercial. And we have not established a process, the council has it, for those cannabis dispensaries and to allow for the ninth and tenth one to go through Plank Commission and city council process. Next slide, please. So the other proposed amendment is to allow commercial cannabis activity to occur in the M S and the manufacturing service zone and the heavy industrial zone subject to C U P and eliminate the needs to be located in one of the three subareas that I mentioned before, and so currently, commercial cannabis activity is only allowed in manufacturing service zone properties, as long as you apply for a change of zone. So we're saying, remove the need to apply for a change of zone and still go through the process, but it's a conditional use permit approval by the Plank Commission that's required. The other is to maintain a six-hundred-foot distance for commercial cannabis activity. That's in the code for residential zoned lots. So when we're looking at, you know, in the industrial parks, we need to make sure that it's six-hundred feet away from the nearest residential zone property in the city, which we've done. Next, next slide. So what does that look like? And so you've seen this already, just want to go over it real quick. Everything in, in yellow is currently zoned residential and in the city, and so you could never have a commercial cannabis business located in those yellow areas. They have to, so what's left, right? You only, you can only do commercial cannabis, which again is like cultivation, testing, manufacturing, in, in that area like the auto wrecking zone and the industrial area near the, the permit center, but what it would also potentially allow by taking away that requirement to apply for the, the industrial park overlay zone, it would allow for a new area, which would be that area east of the eighty-six expressway for a commercial cannabis activity, and, and so they, you can see there, it's not in the yellow, so that's obviously up to the Plank Commission to consider today. The next, next slide, please. The next, next slide, please. So, uh, we, we recommend removing the requirement for development agreement for retail cannabis businesses. Uh, and for commercial cannabis activities. So in the code, it says you could either apply for a conditional use permit. Um, or a development agreement. And it, it doesn't really make too much sense. We looked at the record, development agreements were required. Uh, or were pursued. And, uh, it didn't really result in, in added benefits to the city. Really what it did. Was set the tax structure for the city, but we already have a citywide tax structure that, that the city council approved in February. And that's basically what it did. So we didn't see any purpose. So it does make sense that the conditioning use permit. Kind of be that process because the development agreement really didn't do much. Um, the only thing it really did was establish. Uh, it put in place the entitlements that were approved by Plan Commission and City Council for up to seven years. So there's a benefit. To the developer, the developer can still request, request a development agreement, aside from a conditionally use permit. But, uh, we want to change that because it's not necessary. Next slide. Okay, uh, so we suggest eliminating the 250 foot paved street frontage. And the five acre lot restriction for commercial cannabis businesses in the auto wrecking zone. So. All those properties that are highlighted with the light blue boundary, those are properties that have less than 250 feet of. Paved street frontage and some of those are less than five acres size. And so what that means is that. Those are actual locations that have to get a variance from the plan commission to be approved. And so I didn't really understand. Why the need to have a 250 foot, uh, paved street frontage there to make sense. We have approved the variances. So I. I always think it's best not to rely on variances because you have to make certain findings. Um, next slide. And so the other amendment is what we suggest is to allow an expiration timeframe for conditioning use permits and architectural review. Uh, you know, we were having this discussion with the city attorney's office. Um, currently our process only allows for a one year. Um, approval after it goes to do the, the plan commission. But it's really difficult to have all your plans prepared, submit them for building plan check and to actually receive your billing, uh, permit. Uh, or start construction after a year. So most of the time, people do have to apply for extension of time. Uh, so I, I think, uh, in order to be competitive and to also kind of do what are, um. To be comparable to surrounding cities, city of La Quinta, Nino, do allow for a two-year. Uh, timeframe for conditioning use permits and kind of they call it development review permit, but that's like our architectural review. Next, next slide. Um. So the other is to establish a more defined conditioning use permit. And architectural review, uh, revocation, uh, procedures in chapter 17.74. And so what this would do is allow for us to have more clear procedures. And so the city attorney's office did prepare some revocation procedures that would be a little bit more clear. And, uh, more defined than we currently have at the city. The next, next slide, please. Okay. So the other is, uh, we've had outdoor cannabis cultivation applicants that. Were interested in doing outdoor cultivation in that zone, uh, east of the 86. But they were concerned in the code to where it says a maximum turn of, uh, of four years, which could be extended. We don't have the 12 year maximum time period in the code, but I would suggest if, if the plan commission. Really wants to see that maximum of 12 years, that, uh, you consider approving that, um, what it would probably do. Is, uh, allow for more potential outdoor cannabis cultivators to propose a project. Cause they just have more certainty that they could do this more than four years. Next slide, please. So, uh, the other thing that the plan commission asked for is just what do the revenues look like? For the cannabis, uh, businesses in the city. And so in 2021, uh, these were the revenues that you had for the different, uh, types of businesses. Uh, this was presented to the city council in February at a state session, but, uh, those are our tax rates and amount that we. Were getting, um, in 2021. I, I don't have updated numbers for 2022 as we're in the middle of that year. But, uh, you could see that it does, uh, provide currently substantial amount of revenue and it could provide more. Uh, as we get more outdoor cultivators and some of these dispensaries, uh, open up, right? Rest of them.
So one question here, um, sorry, can I ask a question?
Of course.
In the report, the new tax rate now is going to be instead of 4% cultivation, it's going to go down to 2% and the retail will stay the same. And manufacturing will be 2% and distribution is going to be zero, right? So distribution doesn't have a large amount, but that cultivation piece, what is that going to do with that lower 2%? Right? No, because that's going to be for the new fiscal year, right? Not the one that we're in right now. So it'll be implemented in 22, 23 fiscal year.
Um, yeah, so, yeah, we, we, we anticipated definitely a reduction there because of the lowered tax rate. But because of the incentive to do business in there, we feel that it, it would offset or actually bring in more revenues. Cause we'll have, uh, interest in more cultivation.
So do you think, you know, that you mentioned, uh, some people want, and want to establish at least 12 year. Um, would that increase cultivation and, and offset that 2% reduction? Is that kind of what you all are thinking? Yes, potentially. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And so, so that's, that's the idea. And hopefully, uh, we, we see that with, uh, the cultivation businesses. That come in, uh, maybe that, uh, attracts more of the outdoor cannabis cultivation, uh, because when we started the, the ordinance. It was at 4% then. And so that will go down. Um, next slide, please.
Okay, how, how do we handle a situation like that, that whole area? Uh, I kind of look at it as, uh. The Jackson Northside or Home Depot that, uh, potentially for the city Coachella. So, so when we start getting development in that area, you have a 14 year commitment to these cannabis companies. Uh, how are we going to share the space with somebody? Let's just say Home Depot or somebody wants to build a, a development and we have. That whole area just, uh, covered in, in cannabis business with, with a 12 year commitment. And I mean, that's, uh. That's going to be pretty interesting because I think when the development starts taking place in that area, it's basically going to take off, you know?
Yeah. So, you know, for, for outdoor cannabis cultivators, um, the. The only restriction right now, so they could be allowed in that area that I showed you in the map. Um, maybe, um, if. If, um, you, you're aware of the area, the agricultural area east of the 86 Expressway. Um, so the only, you know, you need to be in certain zones. Uh, and so what was allowed for. Outdoor cannabis cultivators to be, um, in areas that are zoned. Um, agricultural reserve, agricultural transition, even the residential single family zone, uh, and the commercial, um, general zone. Uh, so those were the, the zones that were originally proposed at the time. And a lot of that's kind of even, uh, before I was here. But, um, you know, the feeling that those would be, uh, ideal locations, a lot of that area is already zoned. For residential, single family and commercials zone. So it would be a good, uh, interim use before those other businesses take off. So that would be something for the plan commission to think about, right? So you don't have to allow for 12 years. You can allow for four years. Um, only see how it goes or, or, uh, you have bad operators, then the CP could always be revoked. Um, but after four years, let's say this is not working out well, um, the plan commission can't consider. Um, a, uh, a condition of approval to either allow it just for four years. Um, or just to come back if, if it's not a good operator, right? And.
Yeah, because we're making, we're making 2% on it. And potentially if it's a developer that's going to go in there and pay permit fees and. And, and you know, uh, do a final map on, on, uh, a development, you know, it could potentially bring a lot of money to the city. We don't want to compromise our position of 2% when, you know, potentially we could make, you know, I don't know, just hypothetically. 10% or 20%, you know, so, uh, I know for a fact that that whole area, you know, just a matter of time, but it. It's gonna, you know, we're gonna have some major interest in terms of development. So. I don't want to.
Yeah.
Put herself in a position where we're committed to these cannabis companies, you know, 2%. And, uh, you know, we have these people knocking on the door wanting to do a major development.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's definitely something for the plan commission to consider. Um, you know, if you want to keep it for years, but allow for, um, the CUPs to re, be renewed every four years, which, uh. And then, you know, the, what we want us to do is kind of have an idea of a cap that we can communicate to these cultivators. Right? Cause right now it doesn't really say like, okay, you can go up to 12 years, but define it in a way where, um. Maybe they have the certainty, but it still goes through the process and you can be like, hey, this is very close to a residential subdivision that was just approved. I don't think this is a good idea. Those are things that you could consider, uh, when reviewing it. Um, the other thing you could say is like, hey, I don't think this is a good idea anymore. You could say that, um, you know, you want to amend, um, those. That, that code section, um, but I, I guess I would advise that we do have a comparative advantage in. In outdoor cultivation compared to our surrounding cities. Cause a lot of them don't have. Uh, out, outdoor, you know, agriculture, um, in, in the valley. So we're one of the few cities that allows for it. So there is a, a competitive advantage to allowing for, uh, outdoor cultivation in the city. So it is one of the decisions that, that you're going to, uh, have to kind of grapple with, um, tonight, but, um.
Can we get a legal, a legal opinion on it and see what, uh, how we could word it? So we could actually. The city be in a position where if we do have a major developer that's interested in developing, that, uh. You know, we give them a timeframe where they need to, you know, uh, remove the business, you know, we don't want to chase them away, you know, we'll take the 2% as. You know, it's just vacant there. Nothing's happening. So I think that, you know, once you get some activity in the area. That, uh, we need to put ourselves in a position where we protect the, the city's interest and, and we're able to do developments in that whole area.
Yeah, I don't know. I believe, um, um, Abel is going to be joining us from, uh, Dustin Croaker, but, uh. I don't know if he's on.
Yeah, it looks like he's there. He's raising his hand.
Okay. So, um, if someone could allow him to, to speak and maybe join us as a panelist as well.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello.
So as I understand it, the, the concern is, you know, instead of going to 12 years, having that flexibility. To, you know, before, before extending it such, such a long term to have that flexibility to be able to change it. Um, through the course, is that, is that correct?
I think it's all going to be based on, uh, you know, whatever potentially is coming to the area. We don't want to chase them away. You know, we might not get any requests for the next four years or even eight years, 10 years. So I, I'm just saying that we should put ourselves in a position where if there is a developer in the area that wants to do some. Whatever it is, housing or commercial, that, uh, they have that option and that we're not, you know. You know, because we're, we're generating 2% from these guys. And if, if it's a development, obviously it'll bring a lot more to the table for the city's interests.
Yeah, I think, I think one way that you could word it to meet staff concerns and while also, you know. Meeting that concern is perhaps just having a four year term, but allowing. The renewals and say, you know, they can be renewed to a maximum of X years. So it could be, you know, four year. Returns and it can be renewed a maximum of two times, you know, for, so it's up to 12 years. Um, you could do something like that.
So I had a, you know, what if we did, you know, like a, uh, you set the first four years and then up to two more. See, so you would do it up to a maximum of 12 years, but after every four years, you have to renew for the application. And so you only get up to three CUP terms. So like a, a term.
Well, I, I think with, with your changing herself, these guys, you know, are obviously, uh, putting, making some, uh. Major investments too. So we don't want to, you know, cut them off either. So I think that we do four year increments and base and we're going to just see how things play out, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that, you know, we don't want to put a cap on it of 12 years. If it's going to be 20 years. Well, I mean, it is 20 years, but yeah.
Yeah.
So at least we're generating 2% from these guys.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah. So we, we could do with, um, you know, Abe Sanchez, uh, had mentioned. So right now in the municipal code, it, it just says that you can, it's, it's, it, the conditioning is permanent active for four years. But there was some, uh, language that Plan Commission actually added that allows, that requires city staff to contact. The applicant about renewing it. Uh, we just didn't say how long it could be renewed for. Uh, the changes in front of you, don't say it. Um, but it's something for you to consider. Does, does it make sense for it to be, you know, eight years, uh, to extend it? We think it makes sense to do extend it beyond four years for sure, but staff is comfortable with 12 years. Uh, but again, it, you, you do have that challenge that development could, uh, occur before the 12 years. And maybe by year seven, you're like, well, you know, we may not want to, uh, approve a conditioning use permit renewal after the eighth year.
Anything else from commissioners?
So on this, um, larger, um, sheet that you gave us, um. Gabe, there's, the retail cannabis has no, um, distance from residential or distance from cannabis use. Yet retail cannabis, non-storefront retailer and, and non-storefront micro business has the, the restrictions. Can you kind of explain why those get the restrictions on the, on those as opposed to someone where you can walk into a store? Is it because it's storefront?
Yeah, uh, that definitely commissioner, if you got all, I don't know why that restriction is in there for, uh, non-storefront. Uh, it looked like, um, the city did allow for retail cannabis to be within close proximity. Of, uh, residential, but, uh, but not the same for, uh, non, non-storefront. Uh, I don't know why that exists. The Plan Commission did have to consider that for the best friend farm application. And that was a, uh, non-storefront. Business and it was within proximity of residential and it required a, a variance. So, well, you know, you can consider this in a couple of different ways. Maybe you don't think the. The distance requirement from residential makes sense anymore for non-storefront retail. Cause you think it's, it's less harmless than a, uh, a dispensary. Or, you know, you could say that, uh, you think there should still be a distance requirement from residential. But, um, you know, and, 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 and be more strict. Uh, but the only thing I would caution about being more strict, you know, you do have, you know, at least one active business that is. Uh, within 250, uh, feet of residential. And, uh, you probably have a couple of other businesses that would be considered non-conforming. If the Plan Commission was to recommend more strict standards for dispensaries. So it's really, you know, this is obviously for you to consider. And if you think that there's an impact for either the two, the different businesses.
I think this ordinance change, we have a total of 10 dispensaries potentially for the city Coachella. I think once we get close to that number, then we can make an assessment then what the pros and cons are going to be overall across the city. So we're not even there yet. We have just, uh, I think maybe two or three licensed, uh, cannabis, uh. Dispenses are in operation. So I think when we get closer to those numbers and we'll have a pretty, a better idea of what, uh. What the pros and cons are going to be. And then like you said, we can adapt to, or change the ordinance or. Or amend the ordinance, whatever we need to do. Uh, but I think we need to get those numbers to see what. With the potential pros and cons are going to be. So.
Gabe, I have a question on the development agreements. I know for all of the retail cannabis and the commercial cannabis. Actually just the retail, but for, I know you mentioned. Um, why you were recommending or why staff was recommending that we don't have any development agreements. Have we seen, you know, how that compares to like other cities? Like are, do they have development agreements with retail cannabis? Or are they not doing that either? Or, you know, I'm just kind of trying to. Understand that part. I know with the county. That's one thing that we kind of look at the most is like ensuring that we have that development agreement. And I know it's different. It's. Unincorporated communities that we're like really focusing on. Um, but I'm just wondering like. Why we wouldn't benefit from having a development agreement with these?
Uh, we, we could, uh, but we haven't for the cannabis businesses that were approved by the city. So even though that they. Uh, went through the development agreement process with Plan Commission, City Council, all it did was set the taxation rate. But you, you can do other things to say like, hey, you get a dispensary or you get a, uh, you can have cultivation on site. But we want to see this in exchange for allowing you to have the opportunity to have this business, right? So we just haven't done that. And so it, it still could be a tool for that. Plan Commission can say like, well, it does make sense for you to, to. To operate, but we want to see this in exchange, right? Because the developer, they're getting a few things. Um, in the past, they've been getting that seven year entitlement, which right now I mentioned with the CUP, it's just one year, right? And then you have to quit. But the other thing. with the CUP, it's just one year, right? And then you have to quit. But the other thing too is that um, uh, forgetting the last point, but uh, it's, it, so it's, it's, it's benefiting. Well, the other thing was they were getting the taxation rate and that's no longer necessary because taxation rate is across the board. So it's something to think about. We could still have it in place. The only thing I would say is when I have to deal with some of these businesses and they want to change their operations, the development agreement has been very specific to what they could develop. And to do any changes costs a lot of money. And so with the development agreement, right now, the applicant has to pay a 2% uh, building permit fee to the city uh, or 2% of their, their building evaluation to the city. So the city does get some benefit there. But the other thing too is that it takes a lot of time uh for, to go through that process, right? Staff time to negotiate the development agreement. Um, and so, you know, I kind of don't know. I, I don't think it's worthwhile to do it if we're just continue to have the same type of agreements. But if we're benefiting some other way, maybe it's worth it. But it takes a lot of like staff time, the city attorney's time, and then the attorney's time for the applicant. Any kind of change that's made to the development, the development agreement has to be amended. And it's just like, um, just in my opinion, they really hate going back to that process. So I just think it makes it easier for businesses to do business in the city. Uh, but that's really up to the Plan Commission and Council, so.
Okay.
The last question I have was on the CUP for the two years as opposed to the one. I know you mentioned the city of Indio and then La Quinta, but uh, do either of those cities have CUPs for dispensaries? Uh, what about the city of Palm Springs who has a lot more dispensaries and what they use standard for those kind of dispensaries? Because they build a lot of those dispensaries there, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
They, they've been using there for their CUPs and process.
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I, I assume it's probably like a conditional use permit process with conditions.
And does her husband has him too, yeah?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if they use a, a development agreement. I'm just kind of basing um, it on just my experience working with uh, these existing businesses that have been either approved and looking back on the development agreement. The other thing too is that there's supposed to be an annual review of all the development agreements. So these are supposed to come back to the city council and to see how they're complying. Um, and so, you know, there, you know, um, a lot of those we haven't seen yet and they have to come back to the city councils. So it does require a lot more time. Maybe it's a good thing that we do, we do this annual review for the development agreement. But, you know, if someone's not complying with the conditioning use permit, the, the Plan Commission and, and council can, can you know, request that a CUP be considered for revocation. So a lot of things to think about, obviously, but uh, that's why, you know, I'm proposing this with, with the code amendments.
Thank you. Anything else from uh commissioners? We actually didn't um, open up the public hearing yet. Nope. Okay. So we're gonna open up the public hearing at 6:52 PM. Do we have any public comments? Um, anything that staff received?
Yes.
Not here. For things. The overlay extension. Uh, leave for last. It's the, from what I've heard, uh, there's uh, four, four items I'd like to address. Uh, first of all, is the I think that if you're gonna extend the time period from one year to two years, it, it should be 18 months, okay? And with the condition that if, if they pull out the permit, go to development within the first year, 2%. If they take more than one year, yes, they, to a maximum of 18 months, 4%. Given them, and send them, uh, this is to eliminate speculation. One of the primary problems with Coachella, and I sound like I'm broken record sometimes, but back in 79, back in the seventies, yes, that, uh, there was, and there still is a lot of speculation. If when it comes to development in city of Coachella, what happens? Look, look at Starbucks. They're gonna open in September, okay? They requested a condition use permit, yes, they uh, no zoning change. And they have the capital to pull out the permit right away and develop, okay? Speculators don't have the capital, okay? They need incentives, okay? Serious incentives for them to pull the permit and it's the, and, and develop, okay? And not is the uh, by way of uh, influence peddling, get a condition use permit, uh, a zone change, but don't have the capital. And you can use that condition use permit and zone change to see if they can generate the capital to pull out the permit and develop, okay? I would suggest you consider extending the time period from one year to 18 months with a condition that if they pull the permit and start developing within the first year, 2%, okay? And if, if not, yes, they, they got six more months, okay? But it's gonna be 4%. And it, and it's as an incentive, you've gotta, yes, they, uh, give speculators an incentive, gotta pressure them, yes, they, uh, not to speculate. Okay, yes, they, and uh, that touches on the extension from here to two years, yes, the uh, and the 2-4%, yes, that, the, the, I like the concept of the uh, overlay extension, yes, the, of the zoning, because it reminds me of back in 79. Yes, the, uh, I, I propose that uh, that uh, there be no zones, okay? That we respect uh prior existing conditions within the existing zones, okay? And outside of that, no zones in the city of Coachella. And when the, the project or development comes in, the, the commission uh, is the, decides if i- i- it's compatible or not, yes, they uh, with what they're proposing to uh, the surrounding area or adjacent area, be it residential or be a commercial facility or be live heavy is the industrial zoning. And, and it was, would facilitate the, the whole process of, yes, the of uh, development in the city. But there's, there needs to be a condition that it has to be compatible, yes, they, with, yes, the, the surrounding areas. Yes, they, where the project is uh, being proposed, okay? I know I said it, I have five, four items I wanted to address, but I think I incorporated all of them. Just for your consideration.
Thank you.
I think I'm open to the idea of the no zone. I think that Gabriel could maybe elaborate on that. That, doesn't the city of uh?
And, and Mr. Gonzalez seconded, uh, stay, I was also thinking, yes, the uh, a max of 12 years with, with the condition that they uh, apply to renew, new, yes, the, every four years for a maximum of 12 years. That's a good idea.
Thank you. Okay, we still have the public hearing open. Do we have any other public comments?
There are none online.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, 6:58, almost 7:00. Um, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, but do commissioners have any other questions or comments um, on this item?
Yeah, I wonder, actually, uh, if Gabriel could give us some insight in terms of the no zoning and how it works and what the pros and cons and the advantages for our city of Coachella.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I entirely understand the, the no zone. If, if that's like, that can mean a lot of different things, right? So I showed you the, the subzones, right, where cities geographically, this is where we want cannabis uh dispensaries or commercial cannabis like cultivation to exist.
I'm not referring to cannabis. I'm talking about just the general, the general plan.
I think that might be, that might be a topic for like
Yeah, no, no.
A whole new meeting. We're gonna need some.
I had heard that city of La Quinta, La Quinta had something like that and, and it works pretty smooth. I'm not sure.
Yeah, La Quinta doesn't have that, Commissioner, but um, but like zoning in general, if you kind of read a lot of literature out there, there's kind of questions about if zoning is a good tool for, for like planning, right? Like new developments in the city and um, if it actually creates a lot of restrictions in the city. But uh, we have to look into it more. I know some of that's kind of also a, a pretty philosophical question about uh zoning. Just most cities do have it, uh, but it, it may make sense to kind of schedule a time, uh, if the Plan Commission wants to do that to
Yeah.
Consider that.
Let's, let's look at, look at that and then uh, just look at uh, what the advantages and disadvantages do we for the city and then we maybe just have a dialogue and figure out.
Yeah.
Kind of work for Coachella.
Yeah, zone, I mean, a lot of the zoning that came from the nineteen, nineteen hundreds was to avoid the situation where you have res- residential near industrial, right? Create zones and separate some of the uses. But other people questioned if, if that was the best tool. So we could, we could bring something back, you know, the Plan Commission wants to do that.
Okay, thank you, Gabriel.
Okay, do we have anything else from commissioners on this item? I know there was a couple of things said um regarding the extension or the time for the CUPs. So would anyone like to make a motion with those recommendations? Um, would you like to see the item again? Would you like to continue it? It's completely up to the commission at this point, but um, I know it's, it's been a lot of information that has been given to us and so um, there's a lot to consider with this item.
And I forgot to mention staff's recommendation, chair and commissioner. Recommendation is for approval.
Yeah, I think you showed one slide very briefly with that.
We could do that, Gabe, with the, with the stipulation conditions on, on, on keeping the four-year increments. And then uh, I don't know if you put a cap on it or 12 years is good, but I think with the stipulation that if there is a serious developer that uh, want to pull permits and that there's some consideration, you know? And, and they would sign those conditions with the, with, with those, with those approvals.
I think some of the developers will feel more freely to commit to the city if they don't have a cap, you know? As uh, as you say, women and they put a lot of money into these businesses. So I think uh, restricting it up to 12 years will be like, what if after the six, seven years, they start making good money and then the condition for me expires that way, never mind. Should have thought about that, but I think um, a cap put into the 12 years, I don't think that it's a good idea. I think the extension will be more feasible to the city and to see how it continues.
I think by year seven, you should have made money or not, because you should have made money at least by year two. You know, at least by the first four years, if your business did not make money, then you're, you know, then you kind of know, you know, especially in that, that lucrative business of outdoor cannabis, because it's very expensive. So I don't think you see like an actual um, return in investment probably till after the four years. And maybe that'll, you know, that's where people will determine that on an extension. So it'll vary on the operator, right? So it depends if the operator comes with the back, you know, funding source or, or, you know, and I, I can see why having it at 12 years could become a hurt, hit, hindrance, because then you purchased all this and, 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 and invested a lot of money. So, you know, just varies, but, but you also, you know, hinder big developers say, well, that, those people can stay there for as much as they want because there's no cap. So when, when do I know the zoning is, it's okay? Or when can I place my home depot? Because, you know, that's the word of the night, some people, right? So um, or whatever's gonna go there, right? So especially in that area, so kind of can go both ways.
I don't know. I think, I think four-year increments is good, you know? We give them 12 and then I don't think that we should really, you know, we should do 12 and then with the option, if nothing's happening in the area, then obviously, I think it makes sense for us to generate the 2% and no percent, you know, so. 2% is that indefinitely for the duration of 12 years? Or, or do we revisit, revisit it every four years and, and based on, you know, other performance, if they're doing better, the industry? You know, we don't know if this industry, it's up and down, you know, so everybody says lucrative amount, but the initial investment is, is big, you know, so. You know, people obviously, investors want to make their money and they want to make sure they're making some kind of profit.
So I think we are all sort of agreeing that the four-year maximum isn't really feasible or, you know, appropriate, I guess, for, for these investors. And so what, where can we meet in the middle? Where we're also not doing it that it's like a 12-year maximum. Um, and I know in, in some of the language, it says it's unclear whether currently, it's unclear whether the CUP can be renewed. So could we perhaps not do 12, but maybe something, maybe like six or eight years? And then allow for that to be renewed if they're interested in renewing.
Yeah, commissioners, you could make that, you could change the four-year allowance right now, change that to a different clear requirement. Um, what's not in the code right now is that 12-year like maximum, right? So you, you could either decide you want kind of to allow for 12 years and, and that's what you get. Or that you have to get the renewal every four years. So there's, there's a lot of ways to do this.
I think it makes sense to keep it four years, that they're, after four years, you get
And allow for them to renew.
Yeah, and then
Yeah.
Renew to up to 12 years, you know, and based on whatever's happening out there.
So what about the first four years to be 2% and then after four years can be 4%?
Yeah, I don't think we should.
That's set by the city council, right? Those rates are
Yeah, I think that's already, that's already been, it, I think it said something about
It was a 4%, it dropped to 2%, we should just get to the 3% of that.
I'm gonna agree with you. Yeah, it looks like the new tax rate structure was adopted this year in February. So that's that already, but something we can still work with is, you know, um, the maximum that we have, which is right now is four. And yeah, it's not, I don't think it's appropriate, but um, we can allow them to renew. I mean, at the end of the day, I think they'll know if they're making a profit and they want to continue, continue doing that with their business. So um, that's just my two cents with that.
Yeah, I think what Ventura mentioned, it makes sense because we do have a lot of speculators. I think that, that, a classic example, we had one already potentially on Fillmore, then we gave them, and they uh, they were all in, all of a sudden, they just dropped the ball on the whole project, you know what I mean? So that's a classic example of speculators that, you know, just out there, really don't have the money and the investors in place to make some of these budget events.
Yeah, exactly. Commissioner, um, just, just some feedback in terms of some of those types of businesses that were interested in doing outdoor cultivation. Uh, some of the reasons for pulling out, I, you know, have been mentioned that, you know, obviously uh, the cannabis industry, the revenues coming in is a lot lower than it was anticipated when you started allowing them. But the other is um, uh, kind of concern about governor waters shortages, which we don't think is gonna affect the industry uh, in the ag areas. Uh, and then the third one is we've been adding conditions regarding uh, helping to improve the, those roads, right? Along the front edge and the agricultural areas. Some of those roads are in pretty bad condition. Staff just thinks it's a good idea to um, you know, if, if we're gonna extend the conditioning use permit to do that, that there are some improvements that, you know, we need to see in that area and it benefits the applicant too.
I think the one on corner of 50 uh, and Fillmore agreed to sharing some of the costs on, on the road improvements. What was the project that, that actually uh, how many acres was there that, that were speculated and dropped to the whole project?
Oh, it was, you know, I think Nikki might be there. Nikki, Nikki recalls the numbers, but I think it was more than 200.
At the top of your head, you remember?
If I make, Nikki, uh, your associate planner, so those were two entitlements, one was um about. The total is actually almost two hundred acres. And so, and those were separated, one is larger than the other, I believe one was eighty acres and the remaining was onto the.
Two different developers or same developer?
One, one developer, but those were in a different location, and those were prime kind of corner locations, and so the frontage is quite extensive. And so the the street improvements that we wanted to require of them were also extensive. And it all, of course, like Gabriel said, is to their benefit, but the costs for those are, you know, quite substantial.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's a major investment, so I mean, they have to have a commitment to. To the project.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
I don't know if the city attorney was was uh talking, but you're on mute, just in case. Abe, did you have anything to say, maybe you can?
Gabriel, yeah, I'm actually on the phone with Jill, who worked on this uh, on this ordinance, uh, because I wanted to see, you know. In in the regarding the, I think that the the issue that's outstanding is the twelve years um, or the four years. Um, and I'm not seeing that in the proposed resolution in terms of, you know, how, I I know the staff report says, you know, they recommend establishing a twelve-year term. But I think in the, in terms of the proposed resolution, if if what the commission wants to do is simply, you know, allow for four-year terms and allow it to be renewed. I think the proposed resolution does that, um, we could even, you know, add some clarifying language that clarifies that that the CUPs can be renewed after. You know, the forty-eight months, um, but I I think in terms of. The resolution, it's it's worded that way already where it wouldn't have this twelve-year maximum, but I wanted to confirm that with Jill, so I'm sorry.
And I I just want to add something to that, Plan Commissioners, so, yeah, that's how the ordinance currently reads right now. Um, but a lot of interested applicants don't, don't actually like the wording, because. If if it's like four years and that's it, and there's, there's really no supporting language, that could tell you that it goes, can go beyond four years. I think they don't like that uncertainty, right, and so if there's some intent, that's kind of expressed by the Plan Commission and Council. That it maybe could go up to twelve years, I think there's, there's maybe more support from from the applicants. That's what I've heard, I don't know if that's exactly what would, you know, that's a concern across the board, but at least the applicants we've been working with. I think uh, Associate Planner Nikki Gomez has experienced that too.
I think we should do is get the language then right, and then uh, you know, get the legal, obviously interpretation, and then. Once we have everything in front of us and we can go ahead and move forward to the project, I just, you know, the ordinance and all that stuff, it's just. Broad, you know, so, and I I kind of like the idea with Commissioner, with the others recommending if uh, you do get the speakers. We keep it at two percent if, you know, and if they don't perform an X amount of time, you know. Like you said, four, we could, you know, keep it at three percent, you know, try to be as reasonable as possible.
But would that be possible?
Yeah, so I I guess this is, I I don't know the answer to that question. With legal counsel, I think it would be hard for the Plan Commission to set taxation in the municipal code, uh, and so if. We probably have to talk to our our finance director and figure out how that would work. Um, but, or, you know, the other thing too is, if you want to us to investigate that, and you do want to approve the resolution with. Considering, you know, like a, uh, like a tiered structure, if you don't perform. Then we could, we could, we could consider that with the City Attorney's Office after this being approved it. And then to um, take those recommendations of City Council, but that, would that work, uh, legal counsel? Or would it have to come back?
I I think if you want to approve the ordinance now and, you know, with direction to staff to explore a tiered structure, that's certainly something you could do. Uh, that's what I would recommend if you do that, if in terms of moving it forward. Um, I mean, you could always bring it back, but you, I think you could also just approve the resolution and provide direction to staff. To explore the tiered structure and maybe report on it during an upcoming meeting.
Well, let's do that, let's sort of move forward, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we go with staff recommendation. And then obviously with uh, with stipulations on the legal language to to read uh. The two years and then obviously the three years if they don't perform, you know.
What about the, the time period for them being allowed or?
Well, I think we should just keep it at four, I mean, that's my recommendation, keep it at four and then with the. The maximum of uh, of twelve and it gets to twelve, and if there's no activity out there. I think it would make sense for the city to, you know, consider actually extending it another four or whatever, based on, on whatever's happening in the area, I think. We don't want to have a bunch of vacant property out there, and I mean, it makes sense to generate two percent. Then no percent, and then we just have vacant property out there, so we we have no clue of, you know, developers are gonna come in and develop that order, but I think potentially.
Do we have any other comments from Commissioners? Can also bring this item back, just.
Well, you just said we can approve it the way it is and then with the condition that they would get the legal language taken care of, so.
Right, but I think. I think we don't have like the, I don't think we've come to an agreement now with the timeframe for allowing them to do their businesses. Is it, are we leaving it at four, are we, you know, moving it up to six or eight and then allowing them to renew, like? Are we gonna do a maximum of twelve, do we have to do a maximum? I think it's something we should probably, you know, further discuss, I don't know what other Commissioners think.
Okay, now I'll take the true millions and recommendation. If you want to make motion.
Okay, there it is. Okay, well, we have a motion, do we have a second or do we have a different motion?
You want to make a motion?
No, I thought you did. I am not. I am not making the motion for the record. Gabe, you're a, you're on mute.
Not really talking, but I don't, I don't recall hearing the uh, emotion.
Okay, okay, all right.
So where we at?
What do we think, Commissioners?
I I think it's like, the plans there, uh, I think the four years is great and then twelve years maximum. Uh, like Commissioner Fierro stated, once you're done with four years, you should pretty much know where your business is going. Uh, the thing I'm having trouble with though is like the verbiage, but I know uh, legal stated that. We could just recommend staff to look further into it after we approve it, so that's why I'm kind of on the fence of either making a motion now. Or continuing the item itself.
You know, my concern is that, let's say, for example, we have one of these guys going and they post up there every eight years. And they want to extend it another four years, and then there's a development right next to it that wants to build a housing track.
Could we add?
So uh, you know, that that's my concern, and then how do we?
So could, so Gabe and 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 Gabe and Abe, um, could we add language, you know? Considering what Commissioner Gonzalez just mentioned, which makes perfect sense, could we add language into this ordinance where. We would be able to make that, um, I guess, decision whether, you know, as he stated, if they already have. Something for eight years and they're not doing anything with it, and we have something else that we could probably go with, would we be able to have that? Um, so that we can change it.
Let's say they do have an establishment that's great years and they want to extend it for another four years. And then we're gonna have a legal fight because there's no verbiage in the original interpretation where. They're gonna have legal grounds to say, we're entitled to another four years, there's a housing development that wants to take off.
Right.
And they already submitted their tentative map, approved it, and they're ready to develop.
If, if I'm reading the language correctly, you know, it it's the way that the amendments. The the resolution that you have and the proposed code amendments that you have, what they say is the term of the CUP is forty-eight months. It can be renewed, but it's forty-eight months, it doesn't, it doesn't have in that language a twelve-year maximum. So i- in terms of them, they will need to come back in forty-eight months under the the proposed language. That's, that's already what it will do, and Gabriel, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's how I'm reading it.
I think Mr. Gonzalez, Commissioner Gonzalez is at uh, stating is if they're um. In between a a four, a four-year one, right? So I think that then more falls into the, the other language in the um. The established, you know, more defined CUP AR revocation procedures, right, and so. I'm not sure what what is in there, if if, you know, termination of the CUP will occur, you know. If a development that trumps their development, like, you know, that, because this is technically supposed to be an intermediate, inter- intermediate.
Interim.
Interim can, and outdoor cannabis, because it's not, um, you know. Supposed to last forever, right, that's where you have actual cannabis cultivation in real warehouses and stuff like that, so. Um, I think that language fits better to put in there. The city reserves rights to be able, is that possible for it to kind of cut its CUP in half based on other projects in the surrounding area? But I'm not sure legally, we're about to do that in that language, because it doesn't sound like you can, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
So would we be able to include that language um, in this ordinance?
Did you say to to shorten it for less than four years, if the Plan Commission wanted to prove that, am I getting it right?
No, I gave a hypothetical, I I was giving an example of these, these guys are in there. Eight years and then somebody, we have a serious developer next door, wants to develop a housing track. Has a map, tentative map, find a final map and ready to go, so how do we? How do we, how do we figure that out where this guy still has another two years left, I just say two years, another four years on his uh. On an, an extension on the CUP. Uh, so how do we? How do we handle that legally with the developer that's ready to go and then start building, you know, that's probably concerned is that we do have some activity in the area. And it's next door to the project, and I'm obviously, I'm pretty sure that the developers are gonna have. You know, some concerns of building right next to, you know, the cannabis space.
Yeah. I, I, the, that, that's a good point, Commissioner, um, and I guess, uh, I I just also want to see maybe. Uh, if if Abe has something to say about it as well, so let's say after eight years. You have a cultivator that's been operating, they want for last maybe four year, apply for another four years. But the Plan Commission knows that there are track maps that want to develop. And uh, so you have to make compatibility findings with the conditional use permit. So I don't know if the original conditional use permit kind of sets a precedence and and kind of protects the interest of that cultivator. Um, and that the Plan Commission could deny an extension based on that it could have a negative impact on. Future residential project, so it's a, it's something to think about and uh, that could come up. And so, if you, do you think that would be an issue?
Yeah, Gabriel, that's correct, there, that might be a legal issue, I'm not sure that that's grounds to, you know, to not. You know, renew a conditional use permit or revoke conditional use permit, so I do think that that's, that's a concern. I I wouldn't know right now off the top of my head to tell you definitively yes or no, but I do think that it's, uh, it 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 might be an issue legally.
I do have one more comment, so in this big proposal sheet, on the commercial cannabis, there is no distance from residential on these commercial cannabis. The outdoor cannabis is included there, so by adding frontage, so square, you know, so many. Five hundred, two hundred fifty feet from housing, you know, you reduce that and does that then create a space where you no longer can renew? That CUP because uh, at renewal time, now there's gonna be a plan or there's a plan or they're gonna start building a housing project there. They no longer can be at that location, but that would be where that kind of information should be suited in there so that. You know, I know that right now when you go out there without to say, I don't want to hinder people that are already out there cultivating outdoors. Um, but you know, you have to see what's out there, um, but future, you know, what what's in that area, because I think that's kind of a way to subvert some of the stuff. Because you can't, you know, you have to do that variance process and it can be denied, so.
I think there's gotta be some consideration, obviously, on our part, but we have to stipulate there too that uh, that we also have. Whatever you want to call the power to say, you know, what you guys need to uh, get up and going, I mean, we, we have a developer, serious developer that. That wants to develop the area and there's no distance here, and this is all well, well, west of, because you know, we're not looking at. Potential development area, but I think there has to be some consideration, because I think that's around the corner, I don't know how far of it. And I can't, you know, speculate, but it's all gonna happen.
Yeah, uh, just Commissioners, I want to add, originally the outdoor cannabis ordinance that went before Plan Commission, the original iterations of it. There were distance requirements from residential zone lots, and then that's where, um, you know, Plan Commission and the council recommended. Uh, removing that distance from existing residential uh zoning. Uh, so the idea was to make it more flexible, because when we looked at the map. If if, uh, I think it was like five hundred feet from a residential zone lot, well, most of that area is zoned residential, even though. There's no residential subdivisions, so it only allowed for outdoor cannabis cultivation. Kind of up by the All-American Canal and a very small portion of that whole boundary, um, and so. So we could, we could have those more strict standards again, um, from a residential zone lot. Now, that was a residential zone lot, that's a little bit different than an actual uh residential uh structure. But if you're gonna approve a conditioning use permit, there's not that many residential structures, if you were gonna think about changing. Um, the way the distance from residential is is worded, right, because you could either do a lot or a home. So we talked about Best Friends Farms, and the variance that we, they requested, so for non-storefront retail. It has a different requirement, it doesn't say from a residential zone lot, it actually says from a residential structure. Um, so it all depends on, you could word this uh differently, if if there is concern about. Uh, residential distances uh for for these businesses.
I don't think that there's an immediate impact here, because most of that stuff is uh, vacant land with very few dwellings in that whole area, but. Um, I don't see there's any real potential problem, I'm just saying, how we make the transition. With new development and existing cannabis businesses are already in the area, so. Uh, with the legal. Say, well, okay, we're gonna do some housing projects here and obviously, developer might have some concerns about. Make, you know, making a major develop uh, investment and uh, you know, all the residents are gonna have to. You know, tolerate the smell or whatever you want to. All that affects, you know, potential housing in that area.
Right, any other comments?
Jumping in, maybe I might have five, ten years.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Did we close the public hearing? We didn't.
I thought I heard you close the public hearing.
Thank you, thank you for that, okay. There's been a lot of discussion, um. Does anybody want to make a motion, or would you like to, I mean, we have alternatives, right? Um, we can either adopt the resolution recommending approval of the ordinance that's presented. We can recommend the resolution, um, and then, you know, add amendments. We can recommend denial of the ordinance, or we can continue the item.
And Commissioners, one more thing to add is, uh, if if the hangup is the outdoor cannabis cultivation, right? This, these amendments cover a lot more than outdoor cannabis, right? So the hangup is there, we could still, you know, either approve everything, right? Remove the outdoor cannabis cultivation and take everything else forward, you could approve everything, but bring back, ask, request that staff. Study the issue about um, just, you know, development scenarios for for residential. Because we just don't have that many outdoor cultivators right now, so there's time to kind of think about this a little bit more. And bring that back to the Plan Commission when we could really, um, really.
I like that, Gabe, that's a good, that's, yeah, good compromise, and I think it's something that we're. Well, I'm not gonna speak for everyone, it's something I'm comfortable with, um, so, okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Worth that.
Yeah, Abe. Yeah, Abe. This one's for you.
Can we pull up the slide with staff recommendations and I'll just add to that?
There we go.
I think I have it actually right, one second. And just to clarify that what you want staff to explore is the the term issue with respect to the CUPs, or is there anything else that you also want to direct staff to to look at? So I know what I'm, what I'm proposing.
Yeah, I think how Gabe said, um, so it's in terms of the interim outdoor cannabis cultivation. So, um, development scenarios with within cultivation. I guess that's what we would like to include.
Okay, so I think my suggested language would be to, uh, this, all this language adopt resolution number PC two two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen uh, with and also to direct staff uh, to bring to report on development scenarios for indoor interim outdoor cannabis cultivation. At a future staff, at a future planning commission meeting. I don't know if you want to set, when you want staff to bring that back.
Perfect. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution uh, number PC twenty twenty-two dash fourteen with uh, with direction to staff to report uh what indoor interim outdoor cannabis cultivation would look like in regards to their CUP and the surrounding areas.
Yeah, directing staff to come back.
Come back, uh, date certain, uh, with some report.
But you said they certain, do you, do you want to establish that date or or did you say uncertain?
Okay, now, uh, disregard the dates, sir.
Okay. So we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, uh, vice chair.
Alright. Alright, can we get roll call?
Yes, um. Commissioner Liald?
Hi.
Commissioner Figaro?
I abstain.
Uh, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Hi.
Comis- uh, Vice Chair Navarrete?
Hi.
And Chair Vicente?
Hi.
And also want to let the record reflect that the alternate Commissioner, uh, Guquitas is is president.
Yeah, he walked in around six fifteen for the record.
There we go.
For the record.
Alright, okay. Staff will come back with that. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to our informational item. Do we have anything from staff?
Uh, yes, Commissioners, so on June, on June fifteenth, the next Plank Commission meeting, we do have the opportunity to have uh an architect that I've worked with, uh, you know, in previous positions before the City of Coachella. Um, his name is Henry Lenny. He's an architect out of Santa Barbara. But uh, he is, I'm scheduling him to do a design session with the Plank Commission. And um, so he specializes in Spanish colonial revival, uh, Spanish architecture and like uh, like Moorish architecture, but also modern. And uh, he's, his workshops are are very good for Plank Commissioners. I I've went through a few of them uh with the Plank Commission previously. And so I'm looking to schedule that for June fifteenth and uh I'll coordinate individually with you after this meeting, but um, I'm looking to maybe do a study session earlier in the day, like around five o'clock. So if that's out of the question for anybody, let me know. But uh, that way we can also cover the other items that we normally would cover at six o'clock, so I'm really excited about that, um, this workshop. And you know, I think the Plank Commission will gain a lot from from that workshop. Uh, he is unable to um, uh, be present physically, so he'll be doing his presentation on Zoom. Uh, because he has been having some some medical issues.
Anything else from staff?
Uh, nothing else from staff, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to that. That sounds um, like a really good workshop and something we can all definitely, you know, take advantage of, good opportunity. Thank you, Gabe, for that. Any other questions from Commissioners?
It is June first, so it is the um, beginning of Pride Month in the City of Coachella does um graciously does have the pride flag hanging in 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 front of us today, so just want to acknowledge it is Pride Month. So, celebration and.
Wonderful, alright. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-four P M. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. Really appreciate you all. Have a good evening, everyone.